Good evening, everyone. I'm very happy to call this meeting to order at 6:39. John Cardelli, are you on the line?
I'm here.
Are we checking in now? Is that what we're doing?
Who am I talking to, John?
It's Larry.
Oh, I'm looking for John Cardelli for the education.
I'm here, sir.
Good.
Can you hear me okay?
We certainly can. Would you be able to lead us in education?
I'd be honored. Thank you very much. Dear Lord, we're so grateful for the... Will we get started?
Yes, please.
Dear Lord, dear Lord, we're just so grateful for the opportunity to get together. Lord, I ask a blessing on these council members. It's normally very difficult to oversee and to guide this community, Lord. And now that we have the situation we have and all of the people of the community are in one form or another affected by it, I just ask a special blessing on this council as they attempt to work out situations that have never had to face, have been faced before. Lord, I just ask that you give them wisdom and peace and comfort that they are doing what they know to be best for the community. Lord, I ask all these things in your son's precious name. Amen.
Thank you so much, John.
My honor.
Mr. City Manager, would you lead us in the lines?
At the flag of the United States of America and do the government and do the responsibility for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Maybe a roll call, please.
Councilmember Bonner?
Here.
Mayor Pretend Castillo?
Here.
Councilmember Green?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Mayor Aaron Cranz?
Here.
At this time, I'll be asking each council member... Can I ask everybody to please mute their phones? At this time, I'll be asking each council member individually to confirm that they can hear me clearly. Councilmember Bonner, can you hear me clearly?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Mayor Pretend Castillo, can you hear me?
Yes.
Councilmember Green, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Councilmember Smith, can you hear me?
Good to go.
Mayor Aaron Cranz?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on to the approval of the agenda, I would like to remind the council that all votes at this meeting will require a roll call. Also, please announce your name prior to speaking to ensure accuracy for the minutes.
Thank you.
Do we have anything to report out of closed session?
Mr. Mayor, we do not have anything to report out of closed session.
Thank you. I know it has the city manager if there are any changes into our attempted...
No, sir, no changes.
No changes, thank you. I need a motion in a second to approve the agenda.
Randy, I approve. I move.
Move, then. Councilmember Bonner? Second to the...
Just to confirm, that was a second by Councilmember Green?
Is that correct?
Yes, affirmative.
Thank you. We'll do a roll call. Councilmember Bonner?
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Cranz?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the agenda.
Thank you. We do have one ceremonial matter. This is a proclamation for National Police Week. And keeping our distance, I guess I just sit here and read it and present it to the sheriff, what I threw. And I'm going to skip a lot of these wherestas because it's difficult. Wherestas, he threw this fast. This started in 1962 by President John Kennedy. John F. Kennedy was authorized by Congress to proclaim National Police Officers Memorial Day in honor of all police officers who have been killed or disabled in the light of duty. I'm skipping the wherestas. I'm going to go down to wherestas. It is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agencies, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And wherestas by their service and their dedicated efforts, these men and women have earned gratitude in the city of Canyon Lake. Therefore, it is proclaimed that the city council of the city of Canyon Lake, California, recognizes the week of May 10th through the 16th of 2020 as Police Week, and call upon all citizens of the city of Canyon Lake to observe the 15th day of May 2020 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, dated the 6th of May 2020. If I may present this to the sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you. I certainly appreciate all that you do all the time. Would you like to say anything at all?
Sure. Does that appear?
That would be fine. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. You know, we've been in kind of some unprecedented times these last few months. It's been real trying with various orders coming out and the confusion we've all experienced. We are committed to keeping Canyon Lake safe. I know we've had some trials with beaches as of late, and we're definitely going to try to help that on the weekends. I guess code enforcement has trials there, so we'll stand there, live with them, and do what we can. But again, thank you for this. Appreciate it. And to all the families who've been here with us, all of it really is appreciated. Thank you.
The thanks go to you. Thank you very much for your service. Darcy Burke, are you on the line?
I am, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to give us a...
You go ahead.
Please proceed.
Yes. For the record, Darcy Burke, Division One Director for the Elsina Valley Municipal Water District. So I just have a couple of things this evening. As you may recall, when COVID-19 began, our board took action to suspend shut-off for our customers, and that is expected to end on June 1st. Today, we decided we're going to redo this back before the end of the month, and we may extend it depending on circumstances. For those families or households who are having trouble paying their water bill, we understand that it's a cumulative process. And just because you don't pay this month, it will roll over to the next month. So we encourage people to reach out to our customer service staff now and set up a payment plan that is affordable and that would carry you forward. And for those families that are income-eligible, we actually have a rate assistance program known as the RERA program. If you are eligible for the CARE program under Southern California Edison, typically automatically you're eligible for our program. And that goes to a specific amount of money that is given to those households for a certain amount of water every month. So it's kind of a fixed income, fixed rate, and fixed amount of water. That money is provided by the non-rate payer programs we have, such as we rent the space on our water towers for cell service. And that rate, that rent from that revenue goes to pay for this type of program. So if you're eligible or you think you might be eligible, I would encourage you to reach out and call the Water District right now. The lobby is not open, but we do have staff available to answer your questions and to take your calls. Starting tomorrow, May 7th, there will be a shutdown. It will be on Burning Tree Drive, Canyon Lake Drive South, Pyramid Point, Palma Place, Bluebird Drive. And that shutdown is from 9:00 to 6:00. There will also be parts of Village Way and Lock Woman, and that shutdown will be from like 10:00 to 2:00. So if you think you might be impacted and have some concerns, if you can call the Water District first thing in the morning. We open at 7:30. That would be helpful. Otherwise, you can just expect service to be interrupted, but to be back on. And this is for some valve replacements and water quality issues we have to address. As I reported to you last month, the Canyon Lake Water Trennet Plant will not be operational this year. That means the level of the lake should stay high, and people will be very happy about that. But that's a short-term fix, because the water we have to fly from Metro Palms and Water District to replace that water is almost double the cost. So today, we spoke at a special study session that we are looking to move forward with a plan that will give a comprehensive recommendation on how we can best operate the plant, what upgrades we need, and even if it's located in the best location. So that report is due back in September, so expect some changes to happen in the next operational year, which we expect to be around April. One of the things that I hear complaints about regularly is algae in the lake or poor water quality. And that actually has a direct correlation to how much runoff we get from our spring cord. Every month, our water operations staff reports to me how inefficient Canyon Lake is. So out of all of our service areas, more than a third of those people that are deemed inefficient come from Canyon Lake. And so I'm just going to ask people, if you're watering your lawn or your flower bed, just make sure it's not running off, because that runoff goes directly to the lake and all the organic, all that wonderful fertilizer you put on it to make it green and your flowers bloom, goes right into the lake and feeds the algae. So if we could just be more attentive to the amount of water we're placing on there and try to eliminate as much runoff as we possibly could, that would be very, very, very helpful. And then finally, today, we actually discussed about deferring our rate increase that's scheduled to go into effect July 1st. And we are considering a six- or 12-month rate increase. Obviously, we have to look on the impact. It doesn't do much good to defer rates down and have to make a larger impact in the future, but expect some outcome by the end of the month. That's all I have, Mayor. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Darcy. I don't know if anyone has any questions. Councilmembers have any questions? Hearing none? Thank you again for your report, Darcy.
Thank you for including me. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You too. We have a report from our sheriff.
Hello, everyone. Lieutenant Sam Ward, Riverside County Sheriff's Department. Mayor, how you doing, sir?
Fine, thank you.
So the weekly, I'm sorry, the monthly safe report looks very consistent this month compared to our previous month. Across the board, there isn't a significant change in the calls for service, arrests, citations. The one thing I would take to note is that appears to be a blip or an increase in large state thefts. However, once you go into the individuals, which I'll share with you now, see most are of not high significance. There was one theft of Edison equipment from the first employee of Edison. There's a second one of a propane tank from a motorhome. Third, I reported theft of a case of water. Fourth, of an unpaid haircut at a stylist. Fifth, of a backpack and unlocked vehicle. Sixth, of a license plate stolen from a vehicle parked at the Canyon Lake market. And the final is of the most significance. There was a burglary, a window smashed vehicle, which the person was ultimately arrested by our deputies. Six arrests this month. There was a couple for public intoxications, a third for DUI, the aforementioned burglary where we had the arrest, one domestic violence incident, and the final was unlawful use of pepper spray. And before I turn it back over to you, I do want to say thank you, Mr. Mayor, as well as the city council members, for the proclamation we had earlier to the captain. We also even further appreciate Canyon Lake's city council, as well as the city's year-long support of our deputy sheriffs.
Thank you for your report. Does anyone have any questions? I feel everything was quite minor this past month.
It was a good month.
Good. So it stays that way.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much. Mayor Chief, do you want to call in?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Kirk Cornet, Division Chief with Cal Fire, Riverside County Fire Department. And for the month of April, the city of Canyon Lake had 54 calls for service, one of those being a false alarm, 47 of them medical calls, three public service assists, two standby calls, and one traffic collision. There were no significant activity incidents in the city of Canyon Lake, nor were there any responses over 10 minutes. Relatively easy month for Canyon Lake, but no surprises. Once again, during this time with COVID-19 and everything going on, we appreciate all the city's efforts to help minimize those impacts.
Thank you. Is that the end of your report?
Yes, sir.
Well, we thank you for the information. Council, do you have any questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Pardon me?
No, thank you.
No, thank you?
No, thank you.
No, thank you. Okay. Well, unfortunately, I guess for reasons beyond our control, it was a little quieter than we would like it to be, but we certainly appreciate all that you do, and thank you for calling in.
Thank you.
Special Code Enforcement, Gina Dixon, I believe is here in person.
We had a routine month. As far as cases go, the cases are lower than normal. We're responding to complaints only. We had 46 vehicles between the weekend crew and the Rangers. We're attempting to reach out to Riverside County Parks and Rec to try to get some more help out there to keep a handle on what's going on on the BLM land right now. It's crazy. Friday at the end of April, we had 30 vehicles lined up on Hampshire to go camping for the weekend. So it's almost summertime. That's all I really have. We don't have any community events coming up, and everything's postponed until further notice.
Gina, I got a question for you.
Go ahead, sir.
So I know that the first time we addressed, you know, obviously, was the last council meeting, and we've had conversations. It was chaos, and it was busy, and there's a lot going on. Is it the same people? Have you run across the same people on the weekends? Has there been double citations occurring? Are people, you know, taking note to the fact that they shouldn't be out there? How's the progression on the PR side looking?
I can't say that I've noticed double citations issued, but to be honest, it's really hard to keep up with how fast the four of them are writing tickets out there. So I can check through Citation Processing Center's computer software access and try to get an answer for you on that and send it via email. There's only a few that we've recognized as frequent flyers, and none of them are Canyon Lake residents. But the thing that you have to understand is that people from out of the area that are looking for a place to camp or hang out, they're coming from as far as Temecula. Some of them even farther. They just don't know that they're not allowed to have vehicles out there. And when they see the sign, they figure they've driven so far, who's going to be out there?
Gina, I got a question for you.
Go ahead, sir.
If you've had some difficulty with weekends, with what you just talked about, and I'm concerned about you guys' safety, have you had good backup from RSO if you needed it?
We feel really supported by the Sheriff's Department. I could clarify that when we called to ask for beach help on the Saturday evening, they really were tied up in Lake Elson, or we didn't create a bad situation, knowing that they had limited availability. So our staff is always conscientious, and before we would decide that we needed backup, we're always going to check with them first and see what availability is. We don't... Our goal is not to put anybody in harm's way, especially ourselves, but also them. If they don't have more units available to pull from because they're committed to an incident, it's also our responsibility to make sure that they have what they need for residents as well. So we're very conscientious and working together. Well, I feel like we're conscientious and working together on that.
I'm just concerned that sometimes these situations can obviously get out of hand. While you guys are working together, that's great. And our fair amount, there's safety in the safety of your team. So it sounds like it's working, and good job.
Just one update on that note. We did attend our TASER training, and again, I'm confirming to everybody that we're using civilian tasers because we're not sworn. And we've been trained on those tasers, and we've also been trained in the case law on when they can be deployed and be used as members of a government entity. So the pepper spray training also took place. They do, we do have it, and... But we're not looking for situations, are looking to create situations to need to use them. So again...
Gina, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mayor.
So I see that there were 46 vehicles cited. Was that between BLM Rangers and our code enforcement? And then my second question is, I see that there were seven campers. Can you describe the campers a little bit?
Those would be small tents that were erected in the evenings that they came across and told them, "You got to pack up and go." We haven't had any trouble with the cameras. They just, you know, they see the sign, but they're already there, so they figure they'll stay as long as they can. Fortunately, they haven't been able to stay overnight just yet. The 46 vehicles that were cited were cited by our Officer Lopez and Officer Sun, Ranger Purdy, and Ranger Titus, and then I don't remember the fire prevention BLM's last name. Sorry about that. But they collectively have been working the area together, and they also issue City of Canyon Lake administrative citations because it's the easiest collection process, and I'm thankful, so we gladly process those on their behalf. They turn them in to us at City Hall for processing.
Okay. So it sounds like a collaborative effort, then. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? I just have one question, Gina. Just wanted to make sure that you're satisfied with everything that we're providing for you, that you're not running into too much trouble?
No, I...
Or pushback?
No, we're supported by everybody. We're supported by the community members, and sometimes they're difficult, but it's understandable and... Yeah. It is just difficult times for everybody. Everyone's on edge. There's a lot going on.
Certainly. Well, keep up the good work. We certainly appreciate all that you do. Thank you. We'll move on to public comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Any person wishing to address the city council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city, whether or not it appears on this agenda, is asked to submit their comment electronically by sending an email to publiccomment@cityofcanyonlake.com. Please note that I will be accepting email comments during this meeting in real time. If you're commenting on an item on the consent calendar or on items not on the agenda, I will read the email submissions into the record during the public comments portion of the agenda. If you're commenting on a business item or a public hearing, I will read the email submissions into the record at the time that particular item is scheduled on the agenda. During this period of social distancing, electronically submitted comments should be no more than 250 words and include the person's name and agenda item number. We have no comments at this time.
Okay. No comments. Then we shall move on to the consent calendar.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports, or documents covering previous city council action. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. With the concurrence of the city council, a council member may request that an item be removed for further discussion. Staff recommends approval of all items. Just a reminder to the council, please announce your name before speaking.
Anybody have any items they want to pull? No? Okay. Well, I guess we're going to move on to a public hearing.
We'll need a motion in a second.
I'm sorry. Yes, I've got ahead of myself.
Randy, I approve.
Jeremy Smith, I'll second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar as stated. We need a roll call mode.
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Mayor Pretend Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Cranz?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you. Okay. I guess we're going to move on to item number six, which is a public hearing for midterm housing element. Would you like to address that at all, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to turn this over to our planning director, Jim Morrissey, to make the presentation on this item. Jim, are you with us?
I am. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This is a continued public hearing. It was on your last agenda. The reason it was on the last agenda is we were unsure when the state was going to respond with their comments, so we wanted to take action as soon as their response was received, even though we'd have to have some additional correspondence with them. That did not occur. It occurred after the council meeting, so we continued it until this evening. So it is a continued public hearing. It is open, has remained open, and will be closed this evening. This is kind of the second step in the process of adopting the housing element. It puts us very close to having housing element in compliance with state requirements. So action was taken in October, where we adopted a housing element. Because we adopted it late, we needed to adopt a midterm. That's what you have on the agenda this evening. And once that's adopted, then we would have completed the requirements for the cycle that we are currently in. A new cycle will be starting shortly, but that will be addressed in the future. In the staff report, we've identified some of the changes that were made. It's important to note that the changes noted in the staff report are a direct reflection of what state Housing and Community Development wanted to have in the document. Our consultant, Ralph Castaneda, who's in on the call this evening, had with them, and the document was modified to meet their concerns. The housing element is one of seven elements in the general plan, and they all have to work in unison, and they all have to be, if you will, up to speed to allow activity to occur, be it development activity, public works, projects, and the like. So having a valid housing element is extremely important. We've met all the requirements of the state. They were pleased with what we have. The changes were minimal. So the recommendation to you this evening is to hold. The first one, under item number one, is to find that the amendment to the general plan is exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act. We always take environmental action first, the land use decisions. And then the second one is to adopt Resolution 2020-19, adopting the midterm housing element, which is an amendment to the general plan, as accepted by the State Department of Housing which is an amendment to the general plan as accepted by the State Department of Housing and Community Development in the reflect. If there's any questions, be happy to answer them.
Counselor-
Mayor, this is Randy.
Yes, Randy.
First of all, Jim, I think we all appreciate the good effort you put into this whole activity and taking a lot of hard work and a lot of extra time on yours and we appreciate everything you've done. Just the two questions, and they're not a big question, but on program 16, it talks about the height and housing unit size. And then it says if they pose constraints into development, you know what that operative word, "pose constraints into development," is mean?
Well, the housing element is an attempt by the state to make sure that there's adequate opportunity for development to occur. So, the state wants to make sure that we are not imposing requirements which unduly burden a developer or a potential future homeowner from actually building a development project. There's a section in the housing element that deals with governmental constraints. It's a requirement. So, what they're asking for and what we're happy to look at is whether or not we have some type of criteria that unduly restrict potential development activity and thus reduce potential development activity.
Okay, that makes sense, okay. And then on program 17, it talks about low barrier navigation center. What does that mean?
Well, I'm lucky, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, it's almost the last line of program 17. It's a quote, it says low barrier navigation center. So, what is that?
I'm gonna turn that one over to Ralph because that's a good question. Are you on Ralph? Oh, wait a moment, he might be muted. Well, without Ralph's input, I'm offhand, to be honest. I don't recall. It was a direct discussion with the state and I don't recall what their discussion was with Ralph on that.
Hey, Jim? Jim, this is Larry Green.
Yes, sir.
One of the things that we talked about back quite a few months ago is possibly the city being up for the housing elements, being in compliance with the state, also getting some funding for updating our elements in our general plan. Are we still on track with that? I think it was up to 125 that we could be eligible for.
Yeah, I think you're talking about the SV2 funds. So, I've been in contact with the state and the state seems to be very anxious about us adopting the document. In fact, I got an email from them just this afternoon inquiring how everything was going. And I sent them back an email and within about a minute or two, they responded again. So, I think from what I've heard from Ralph in his discussions with them and discussing the element, they're aware that time is tight and they want to make sure that they're acting within their timeframe, that we're gonna be able to adopt the document and get it up to them. They're gonna need to send us an agreement. I don't know the parameters of what that agreement will ultimately contain, but we provided them all the documentation. They seem to be happy with that. And I've been in discussions with some planning companies to see if I could start to prep them for our idea for the use of the funds so we can kind of hit the ground running. So, as far as I'm concerned, yes, we are in line with that.
All right, good news. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions for the council? Assuming we don't have any testimony by proponents?
Nothing.
Or opponents?
No comments on this item.
No comments, okay. Then I'm gonna take the opportunity to, I didn't do this to open it, but I'm gonna do it to close at 7:14. Now I need a motion to add a second to approve resolution number 2020-19.
Mayor?
Yes, sorry?
Go ahead. In addition to the, in addition to the motion to approve the resolution, we should simultaneously approve the environmental action that you referenced. We can either do it before or we can do it simultaneously. I assume the council's pleasure would be to do them at the same time.
All right, so then we need a motion to approve this resolution as well as?
The environmental action. Mention in the staff report.
Do I hear the motion? I hear a dog.
You need a motion?
Yes, please.
All right, this is Green, I'll make the motion.
Second, Casey.
Motion by Councilmember Green and second by Councilmember Castillo. And we need a roll call vote.
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Mayor Protan Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Krantz?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the environmental action and resolution 2020-19.
Thank you. Moving on to business, item number seven. I think the city manager is going to present this item to us, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Item seven is confirmation of the emergency orders issued by the city manager, acting as the Director of Emergency Services. This, of course, relates to the Nobel coronavirus situation, which has impacted our daily lives pretty severely. Beginning on March 19th, the Governor of California issued executive order N3320, ordering all individuals living in the state of California to stay home or at their place of residence except as needed to maintain continuity of operation of the federal critical infrastructure sectors. The statewide order remains in effect. County of Riverside Health Officer Dr. Peter Kaiser has also issued local orders tailored to our region. When the state and county orders were originally issued, there were many questions from the residents and businesses in the city of Canyon Lake regarding the application of these orders to our community. To protect the health and safety of the community and to provide guidance and clarity, Canyon Lake issued an emergency regulation which with a detailed list of essential businesses and activities to guide our residents and businesses through the crisis. Canyon Lake has taken strong action while the virus aggressively expanded throughout the region. Over the last 45 days, the residents and businesses of Canyon Lake have embraced social distancing practices and aggressive hygienic precaution, not just to protect themselves, but to protect others. Now, the governor's announced plans for a phased ramp down of the stay-at-home orders and the county has issued amended orders as well. It's anticipated that over the next several weeks, the state of California and the county of Riverside will continue to modify the applicable orders to protect public health and safety while maximizing our residents' freedom to go about their daily lives. Per the city's amended order of April 30th, the city of Canyon Lake will fall solely under the governor's stay-at-home order as pertaining to gatherings and the county's orders pertaining to social distancing and mask wearing. What's before you this evening is to confirm the emergency orders. Emergency regulation was issued by myself, but I'd like to add that for the past couple of weeks, as the situation has shifted, it has become evident that the county of Riverside is contemplating either a full rescission of their orders or significant altering of their orders to something less than what they are today. And I know that the city council would like to consider similar action by this body of rescinding the city's emergency order, which would have the effect that we would revert to, we would fall back on the orders issued by the state and if any, that are still in place by the county. So, that I'd like to open it up to the council for discussion and direction.
Mayor, this is Randy.
Yes, Randy.
When you're ready for a motion, I'd like to start out with a motion, when you're ready for one, okay?
All right, right now we're open for discussion.
I'm just asking, when you're ready for a motion, I'd like to be able to do that, okay?
Okay. Do we have any discussions by the council?
Mr. Mayor, this is Jeremy. Chris, I just want to say, you know, this has been an ongoing, you know, crazy experience for us all. And we've learned so much, you know, through this process, I think as a city, I think as the council, you know, we've grown so much through it. And I just want to, you know, thank you and the staff and our city attorney and my colleagues, you know, and all the hard work that's gone into every single order that we came up with. Some of them were on a Saturday night at, you know, 10 o'clock, I mean, literally. And I know Steve knows it well too, because he was pounding it out, trying to get it issued before midnight on Sunday. And there's just so much work that went into it and Canyon Lake is such a dynamic community that requires so much altering. And you guys really stepped up to the plate and I just can't thank you enough. I'm happy to see this, you know, as one of our items tonight. I think that it shows that we're paying attention to not only the local issues, but also county and now state. So, I just want to say thank you so much and, you know, you guys just continue, just work so hard and we're showing that tonight that we're willing to do the right thing. So, appreciate you.
This is Casey. I would like to also add to the discussion and echo what Jeremy said. I mean, I think the staff has really been phenomenal and stepped up during this time. We didn't have a playbook on this and so I think it's been remarkable how we have been able to tailor what we've put out, not only to the needs of the residents, but locally. Also want to commend Mayor Aaron Krantz for modeling the Keep Canyon Lake Covered Mask tonight. Looks really good on you, Jordan.
Thank you.
And that was a phenomenal, just a phenomenal endeavor by the community. My heart is so full for the over 100 volunteers who banded together to literally craft masks for the community. And I know myself and Councilmember Green had a really enjoyable time today passing those masks out to the businesses so that we can get everyone back open and thriving again in Canyon Lake. So, I think we're all ready for this to be done.
Yes.
So, I think, good job, city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I'd just like to say that this, these past 45 days or so have been pretty surreal. I think it's something that most people in public service go their entire careers without ever having to deal with something like this. And, you know, we take our responsibility to protect the health and safety of the community very seriously. We also take our responsibility to protect constitutional rights very seriously. We take our responsibility to our business community very seriously. And balancing competing interests and competing views is not always, not always easy. I'm so proud of the staff in the city. From day one, when this thing started, March 19th, when the governor issued his orders, this staff just jumped into action. Our enforcement team has been phenomenal, working under some very difficult circumstances that they were put in, that they never thought they would have to deal with a situation like this. Long hours, a lot of overtime, a lot of angry individuals. But I'm also very proud of this community overall. The community has really come together and supported each other and helped each other through this time. And largely as a result of the hard work and sacrifices of the community, we've been so fortunate in the city that our number of confirmed cases has stayed low. Last I checked, we're still at 10 cases, which is, you know, per capita, we are the third, the third lowest rate of infection in the entire county, which is something to be proud of. I believe that the overall sentiment of the community now is that we must find a way to get back to some semblance of normal while the virus is still with us and we must still take precautions. We have to get our economy moving again. Our businesses have been crying out to all levels of government to allow that to happen. And so, as the council weighs this decision, which I know is not an easy one, just know that the staff is behind you with whatever the decision is and we'll continue to work to keep people safe and hopefully to get our community working again.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? If I could just chime in briefly, because the city manager, in his usual style, has congratulated everybody except himself for the hard work that he's put in over the last 45 days. Oh, of course, of course, the mayor, the council, well, yes, yes. But I just want to say, you know, the city manager and I had met about eight months ago and talked about what would happen in case of an emergency. It's one of the reasons why we've amended several of the ordinances of the city over the last several months. We didn't know that this was gonna happen, but we knew that something was gonna happen someday. And I just wanted to say that the city's been very blessed to have this city manager at the helm over the last 45 days, working with the electeds to keep you informed, working with the public to keep them informed, working with me to keep me informed. It has been a lot and I don't think anyone really, when they take a job like this, thought this is what they're signing up for. I just really appreciate the hard work he's been in over the last two months, that's all.
Thank you, Steve.
I don't want him to get away with it.
Thank you for your comments and certainly I would probably second everything that you've said, but you've heard me say in the past, even when times weren't as stressful as they were, we still have a wonderful city manager that's taking us in the right direction in just about everything that he promised he was going to do. And I can say, I'm certainly proud to represent this city under these conditions because it has been very trying. I have some comments that I'll say for later on, but for the last couple of weeks, we've zoomed and telephonically met all the mayors of all the cities and spent two hours on the phone with them today. It's quite interesting to see what everybody's going through and everybody has the same problem. We're certainly not unique in what we're going through, but we're gonna get through this and I think this is what everybody is looking forward to. So, with that, I'm gonna cut those comments short for now. And if there's no further discussion, I think Councilmember Bonner, you wish to make a motion? Did you have something that you wanted to say?
Yes, I'd like a motion to rescind the amended order.
Okay. We have a motion.
Second, Casey.
And we have a second. Once again, this requires a roll call vote.
I'm sorry, the motion was to rescind the orders?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
To clarify, it was interesting, did all of the orders or only the one that's currently in effect, April 30th, 2019? I think the motion was to rescind the current one that's in effect.
It'd be the most current, I would think.
Well, yeah, so my understanding is that we placed an emergency regulation in place and then amended that regulation over time. So, if you rescind the one that's in place, aren't you in effect rescinding?
As of today, though.
Yes.
Just for, this is Jeremy, so just for clarification, Mr. City Attorney, this is going to be to, for all of them, correct? All of our notices up to date?
So, the only emergency regulation, as the city manager just pointed out, that is in effect at the current time, is the one that he issued on April 30th, 2019.
Correct.
And so, I was just clarifying, that is what the motion is, to rescind the current one that's in effect. The other ones are no longer operative.
Got it.
Okay. Everybody understand the motion?
Yes, rescind current order as of today. Thank you.
Yes, rescind current order as of today. Thank you. Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Krantz?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Move on to item eight. It's a budget presentation.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask our, our, in a second here, our finance director, Terry Shad, to come up and give a presentation on the draft, uh, budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021. But I, I just wanted to make a quick comment at the beginning. When you look at this budget, something very strange might jump out at you, something very unusual, uh, which is that our estimated revenues for the next fiscal year exceed our estimated expenditures. This, uh, this, the city council and staff have been working very hard over the last year or so to rectify a, a long, uh, long-running, uh, budget deficit situation created largely by increases to our public, uh, by, to our public safety contracts handed out by the county. I, I want to say that, uh, I've been incredibly impressed that this city council has been willing to have some of the very hard discussions and take some of the very difficult actions that were necessary, uh, to rectify the budget situation. And what we have in front of you here is a, a draft budget that if, if adopted next month in June, uh, we'll see what was at the beginning of, of this current fiscal year, when we were doing this draft budget a year ago, uh, projected structural deficit of over $800,000 and taken it, uh, to, um, a situation where we should have a slight surplus. So, uh, there's a lot to it. Uh, staff has gone through this budget, uh, literally line by line, uh, evaluating every single, uh, expense, every, every single, uh, revenue source. And so it's a, um, somewhat restructured budget. Uh, there's a lot to it. Um, we will touch on some of that, uh, tonight and we, we will be making, uh, some additional adjustments between tonight and when it comes back to you uh, for adoption in June. Uh, so there will be some, some things there. But with that, I'd like to ask our finance director, Terry Shad, to come up and, uh, give us some highlights.
I just have one comment. This mask prevents you from seeing a smile on my face. Do you see that I am?
Keeps me from seeing, because of the fog.
We have a couple hundred thousand dollars, uh, on the other side of the ledger for a change. So thank you for all your hardship, everybody.
I'll echo that comment. Mike and Anna and Chris went through every line item on this budget. So, I got, they asked me if they could give it to me over the phone. I said, hey, you know you're doing it right. Your Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council, I'm pleased to be here with the proposed balance budget. At the beginning, if you turn to your staff report, um, that number at 233-549, um, since we printed this, um, we've got a better number for the elections, which went up under 114,000. And then our animal control money, which went up 10,000. We have the same percentage of animals, but the county sheltering costs went up and so we're at 10,000. So there's an additional, um, about $25,000 more. So that lowered that number to about two or three, but still, which is good news. If anybody has any questions?
Hey, hey, Terry, this is Randy. Um, and I, is, is, could possibly get closer to the speaker because I can't hear most of what you're saying.
I think it's because of the mask, but I'll get closer. Can you hear me better?
Yes.
I should get closer to that speaker. Okay. All right. If you can't hear me, just let me know. If you have any questions, feel free to ask. If you turn to page number 320. This is the general fund revenue detail and you can see our largest sources of revenues are property or, or taxes. A little over 5,086. Um, our largest numbers are property taxes, the 868, um, the property tax fire, 1,121, and then the VLS swap, which is 996. All these are, um, assessed value numbers. And so I took last year's, uh, valuation and increased it by 2%. I think it might be a little bit more, but I wanted to be conservative, so I just went up 2%. Last year we went up 4% and I think we'll hit that 4% easy last year. Um, the other big revenue is the utility user tax. Unfortunately, that's been dropping every year, I think, a lot of solar, because electric is our, our biggest item. The city manager was talking about new revenue sources. If you look at the refuse disposal, it went from 84,800 to 318,000. That's, uh, city council, you know, city manager renegotiated. And I guess that number, if it gets approved next, in June, that'll be a good number. Uh, our next largest source of revenues are permits, license and fees. And I spoke with Interwest and they said, plan out about $250,000 worth of revenues in building permits. So that's that number. Um, the largest number down below is that EMS subscription. And that is, uh, 700,000. And city manager showed me that's a conservative number. Um, the residential rental registration program of 100,000 and then the fire life safety inspection program, 25. So that's all new revenues for this year's budget. If you go down to the, um, use of money in property, uh, the library lease income has been cut in half because I think the lease expires in December. So that's just half of that. And then interest income for 30,000. Um, we are getting a CDBT grant for some ADA improvements. That's 43,000. And then the rest of the income is just miscellaneous income. Any questions on any of the income?
No, Terry, this is, uh, Larry, the Green. Uh, one question, uh, this part for you and the CEO. Are we going to have a workshop as we get closer to July on budget and our goal setting for the following year?
Uh, Councilman, we, uh, we, we, we will continue to, we plan to continue doing our goal setting, uh, in, in January. We will do a, the staff is planning on conducting a, a virtual town hall meeting specifically on the EMS subscription program uh, to address, uh, questions the community might have. Originally, we planned on having some kind of a community meeting, uh, in person on that, but, uh, because of the current situation, that's, that's no longer possible. So we plan on conducting that virtually at some point between now and the, the June meeting. Um, but, uh, this, we, we're not planning on having any additional workshops on the budget before it comes back to you at the June council meeting for adoption. So this was, uh, this meeting tonight is, was for the purpose of presenting the, the draft budget and talking through any, any questions that the council might have before we finalize the draft and bring it to you for adoption in, in June.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, uh, obviously, I'm used to running on a, on a July to July thing and we're, we're running a calendar year, so it's okay. Um, good job. I, I like the numbers. Uh, I like the projections, being conservative. Uh, good job to you and Terry and everybody else on the team. So, uh, that's about all I got to say. Thanks.
All right, what's it up? If you turn to page, uh, number, number, number 325? 325? The only, the, all the beginning estimated available fund balances for the gas tax and those special round of funds, those have all been updated. Um, unfortunately, I forgot to update the general fund, the 3,680, so that number is going to go up. So apologize for not fixing that number, but the rest of them are good and the revenues and the expenditures are good. If you turn to page 326, 327, I'll go through the city council on budget. Um, the big differences this year is we've included 30,000 for the winter wonderland and 20,000 for State of the City. And those are the, are the main differences, plus additional, um, training for the new council people on the league. So nothing else unusual in this budget other than those two items. And feel free to ask anytime. Any questions? Uh, city attorney?
Terry, I have one question. Sorry, backtracked a little bit. General, general fund expenditures detail, um, page 321 in my book.
Okay.
Planning operations and maintenance, you know, when you're looking at the numbers from 2017, 18, and now proposed 2021, I mean, it's staggering. You got, in 2017 and 18, it was 46 grand. And then in 18, 19, 84, and then back in 1920, uh, sorry, budget for 2019 and 20 is 42,000. Now, our proposed budget for $185,000, that's a quadruple what, what, what it has been.
Which line item are you on?
I'm on, I'm looking at the general fund expenditures detail breakdown. It's on page 321 in my book.
Are you going?
Page five in the, in the agenda itself.
You're going in total?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, let me, I might be able to provide some insight there. Uh, Councilman, if you could turn to page 337, which is the, the, the budget, uh, for the planning department?
Yeah.
We're doing a number of things here. Um, this, this year, uh, unfortunately, you know, we, we had to do, uh, we had to make some expenditures that were not budgeted in to finish up the, uh, the housing element. And unfortunately, those, those figures were not budgeted in previously. So we, we don't want to, we don't want to run into that same situation this year. So we're going to have to start the sixth cycle of our housing element. Uh, some of that is, eh, explains the increase here. Also, the AB2 funding requires, um, the city to produce, uh, certain documents. So for example, uh, if we move forward with SB2 funds from the state, uh, we, we, we plan to look at a specific plan. The funds from the state, uh, will not cover the entire cost of, of that plan. And so over the next two fiscal years, we'll have to spend some money out of the general fund to complete, complete that plan. And so you see those numbers in our planning department, uh, budget here.
So do we have projections on how much cost recovery we're going to receive, whether it's through SB2 funding or not, to eliminate some of that 185? I mean, I get it, right? But I get the code, especially with the new things that are going down from the state. But I mean, eh, the number's staggering, you know? Is, eh, do we have a, you know, a way, are we figuring a number in mind that we're going to get back?
Well, Councilman, I'm not sure what you mean to get back. I mean, we, we have, uh,
How much is available?
Yeah, I mean, we have legal responsibility.
Yeah, how much is available? Yeah. How much is it available? Because obviously, you know, for SB2 funds, what, what are we applying for in part as the full amount of funds that we're going to be able to receive?
Sure. Um, is Mr. Marcy, are you still on, on the, on the call? Jim might have dropped off. Uh, Jim, uh, knows the numbers by heart, but I believe the SB2 funds are somewhere around maybe 160,000, uh, that we get.
Chris, this is Larry.
Hi, Larry.
1.2, it's 125,000 to 150.
Okay.
Is what, what we're eligible, eligible for for SB, the SB2 funds, and that's based on our housing element.
Correct. Yes. Okay, thank you, sir.
So, yeah, I think our cap is 125, but it may be a little higher, but, uh, it sounds like we're in the stream for that.
Correct. So, you know, if these are things that the city would, would, would want to, want to do anyway, uh, it, it makes sense to, to go for those SB2 funds, uh, to help us do that, but it does require us to, to spend some money to, to complete, complete those plans.
And I didn't project any revenues in this budget, so if we do come up with that number, we'll have it for the next budget here, the SB2 funds.
Thank, thank you. Um, Chris, or Terry, either one, on same page 321, when we're looking at our special enforcement, you know, obviously the number is substantial, but a lot of that is due in part because, you know, of, I mean, what's, what is it because of COVID? Because we're looking at, we're looking at our special enforcements differently? I know we've kind of beefed things up quite a bit. Is, is that, is that the main reason for the increase?
Um, I was going to go by each department, so when we, we could just go through each department and then when we get to that department, we can explain why they increased or didn't.
Perfect.
It's a little easier to work from the detail. So, all right, so if there are no other questions on the city council budget, we'll move to the city attorney. And, um, we, the city manager has requested more hours this year and that's why it's at 77, 700. Any questions on the city attorney's budget?
No, thank you.
Hey, Terry, this is Randy. Uh, page 326, um, promotion and advertisement on State of the City and the Winter, Winter Island, to, to what, from 15 to 68,000?
Yeah, the biggest ones are we upped the Veterans Day celebration, um, we put the Winter Wonderland in this year and then the State of the City. So that's about 54,000 of that number. That's the increase. So those three items.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right. So, next one is page 330, 331, which is the city manager's department. Um, what's different this year is we have a new management analyst position. It is 51,100 proposed budget. What's included in the employees this year, except for the city manager, uh, is a cost of living, which was 2.3 and then a 4% step increase. That's the proposed budget. So a total of about 6.3% raise for employees. Um, and that management analyst position, that reflects that. For Mike, that reflects that raise as well. Everything's pretty consistent with the previous years. Um, except for we added, um, we upped the IT consultant, or I mean, the economic development consultant a little. And we have a new, uh, support service for IT, so that came down a little. Um, our insurance is up about 8,000, which is to be expected. And so, and then the biggest difference is, is more training and, um, and travel and then additional, um, benefits for the new position. So any, any questions on the city manager's budget? All right. The city clerk is next. That's page 332 and 333. Um, if you look over on page 333, we moved the copiers, um, out of finance and over here. So that's why it's a little bit higher. So that's, um, 14,600.
Yeah, and Derek, can you say it again? Because I was trying to figure out, where was that last year?
It was over in finance. In the finance department.
You moved it into the city clerk. Okay.
Yeah. She thought it was her copier, so we moved it over there, so.
Okay, no problems.
No. And then, um, the election costs, which we have 21,000. She got a new estimate with the high side at 35,000. So we're going to amend that to 35,000. And then more imaging. And so, uh, we've done quite a good job this last year of getting stuff from storage out and, and so they're going to continue with that. Any questions on the city clerk's proposed budget? All right. The best department in, in the whole city, finance, 334, 335. Um, I budgeted myself a raise last year, but I didn't take it all year. So this year I just left it at the same number and I, I might be able to afford it this year, so.
Uh, Terry, if I, if I might jump in here briefly?
Sure.
Um, we, we anticipate bringing a fairly significant change to, uh, between this draft you see here and when it comes back to you in June. I just wanted to give you a heads up, we don't have those exact numbers yet, but we're contemplating making a, a, a change here in our, in our contract with Rams and with our staffing. As you know, in addition to Terry's services, we, we currently receive under Rams contract, uh, services of our accountant, Kayla Zano. Um, we're, we're taking a look at possibly bringing her in-house with the city to handle not just accounting, but also uh, human resources, uh, procurement, um, risk management and to help with, um, uh, property management of, of new, newly purchased city property. Um, so we would, uh, the Rams contract would, would come down, uh, in price, uh, as a result, but then we would incur some additional costs of bringing Kayla on, uh, in, in-house. So, full-time, yeah. So we're, we're, we're looking at those changes and we'll, we'll bring those numbers to you, uh, in June.
I said he could have Kayla, but he couldn't authorize me, so. Any questions on finance? And then planning, which the city manager just went through. Um, the reason it's so much this year is because of the general plan, the housing element, the specific plan and the safety plan. In the past, we've budgeted for these items, but we've never did them. And so now we're going to budget for them and get started on those plans. We will come up with an SB2 revenue and we'll add that over in the revenue. We will come up with an SB2 revenue, and we'll add that over in the revenue section of the budget. Any questions on planning? The next section is building and safety. This number is 95%, the two, on page 338, 339, sorry. The 237.5 is 95% of the 250,000 in revenue, and we get to keep 5%, and then 237.5 goes to InterWest.
Let me jump in here again, Terry. So as you recall, when we, well, over a year ago, had to scramble and renegotiate our contract with InterWest, we, we came up with this agreement at 95% and agreed that after a few months of, of this deal, that we would reevaluate that percentage. And so we anticipate in the early, in the next fiscal year, we're going to be renegotiating that number. So these numbers that you're seeing here in this, the building and safety department budget are, are conservative. I think that revenue for the city will be increased fairly significantly, but we just don't have those numbers to plug in yet, so that's something we can look forward to.
Terry, I have a question for you. This is Jeremy. So looking, you know, looking at these line items, you know, for, I know, I know we're only, we're getting, it's 95%, I think we discussed in budget finance today. And back, back what, last year it was 65%? Was that what it was?
No, it was like 72, I think.
It was 68.
72?
It was 68%.
Okay, so 68% of it, can you, do you have the numbers on how much we are losing from last year to the status quo? Just because of that change?
Not, not on me, but I can get that for you.
Can you, can you please get that for me? I mean, I mean, I know it's, it's substantial, we have so much going on, and I get that, but this has got to be a priority. It's been well over, it's been what, five, six months now that, that we've been, and they've been great, they're phenomenal, but we're getting completely killed on this price point. So if you don't mind, if you could make that available to the entire council on just those numbers from last year to the status quo, and how much we're missing out on.
Sure.
I'll get all that for everybody. Any other questions on the building? The next budget is law enforcement on page 340 and 341. Looks like it's dropped, which is really good news. It went up, and so we use CalCOP's money, and every year we get, we get $100,000 plus the growth. And so we didn't spend the growth last year, and then this year we got an additional 56,000. So we're taking 100,000 plus the prior year's growth, plus the 56, and then we're going to offset the general fund with the CalCOP's money of 250,000, which then lowers the general fund hit this year by about 60,000. The city manager emailed me something this morning, I think. The facility rate and the RMS rate changed, but only like a couple thousand dollars difference, so nothing, nothing big. Those numbers will be revised, but it's only like, I think it's like 1,100 dollars difference, so nothing there. So you can see, the total police service contract is 1,865, extra duty 20,000, and then the CalCOP, CalCOP's offset of 250,000, which gets us down to 1,635. Any questions on the law enforcement budget?
Just, just for, just, Chris, just help me out here a little bit. I just, I just want it to be put in the record. We are, although the numbers look good right here in front of us, we are expecting a 6.5% to 7% increase on law enforcement, correct?
Correct. The, the numbers you see here reflect our anticipation that.
Anticipation.
Budget will go up 7.5%. You know, the, the, it's kind of interesting the way the invoicing works.
The invoicing.
That, that increase won't actually happen until spring of next year, but, but once, once that increase has been put into place, then, then they will go back and retroactively invoice us for the previous year. So we'll receive a large kind of a catch-up invoice at that point. So we go ahead and budget that 7.5% increase right from the outset, so that we're not surprised by it when it comes. It may end up being the case that the increase is less than 7.5%, and if so, then that's fantastic, but we've budgeted for what we think is probably the worst-case scenario.
And that, you know, that's important. I, I want my colleagues to hear this on the, on the, on the phone, how, you know, they're going to retroact us, which is close to 9 to 10% that we're going to have to come up with, which is why we have to stop the bleeding as soon as possible with some of these issues. And I know we're working hard with some of our partner cities, sister cities to make that happen, but these type of numbers are what's going to really crush us down the road if we don't get serious about fixing that. And, you know, it's 7% today, it's going to be 10% tomorrow. So I hope, I hope we're, we're continuing to work as, as diligently as we can to find solutions. I know that this council's serious about it, and I'm excited about that, but we really got to dig in.
If I can add to that, this is Casey. You know, I think ours gives us exceptional service. I have no complaints about the men and women who service the city of Canyon Lake, but jumps like this are, they're just unsustainable. And as much as we want to continue with that particular agency servicing us, I, I mean, Jeremy and I sit on the finance committee, and, you know, every month we see varying bills, different bills, different line item bills, and it's, it's hard to swallow.
I can comment on that. The last couple of weeks of these mayor meetings, the conversation has been that some of the cities are quite shocked about the invoices that they've been receiving, which indicates about a 7% increase in the sheriff's department. With all due respect, we love you guys, we love what you do, and this council and Castillo said it's unsustainable. A few of the comments today were that when our new sheriff was elected, he promised us, or he promised the cities, no more than a 2% increase is going to take place this, this year, and lo and behold, we've been invoiced for 7% now, so just a comment that shared by not just us, but most of the cities that's contracted with the sheriff's department. That's all I have to say on this issue.
Can I make a comment? This is Larry. This has been an ongoing discussion for quite a while, and you guys kind of know my position as far as looking at other options and other models that we have out there, and I do believe that it's time for us to make a change. We're going to be in an unsustainable situation with the costing, with us having no input as far as, even having a voice as far as the costing. And so I think that we really need to seriously look at options for us. I think we have several on the horizon, and I think that this council and future councils are going to have to realize that we have to do something different, but try to maintain a service level that's equal to or better than what we're currently getting, and I think that that is attainable. So that's pretty much all I got to say.
Sure. Next would be fire, and that's on page 342 and 343. This is the budget we received from them. It's a total, it's 2.2 million 248,000. Last year was 2 million 259. This year includes $10,000 for additional upgrades to the station. So I think the city manager indicated earlier that the prior year, they didn't bill us near what they were going to, and so I think this is a more realistic budget as to what they're going to actually bill us this next year, so.
Yeah, let me just jump in real quick. I just want to emphasize that while it looks like our costs have gone down from our current year to the next fiscal year, I just, I want to remind everyone that there was a very large discrepancy this fiscal year between what was budgeted and what was actually billed. And I think what, what we're seeing here is that the county is, is trying to give us much more realistic cost estimates, but the amount that they're billing us is greater. So I don't think we will see actual cost savings this year. I think we will see, you know, actual increases in costs, but the, the estimated budget they've given us is, is more consistent.
All right. If there's any questions on fire? All right. The next is the emergency preparedness division, and that's on page 344 and 345. We budgeted an additional 7100 in expenses for, and we will have a grant for that amount, so we have a revenue for that of 7100. Has the usual code red services, the supplies, and then some emergency preparedness kits, and then the satellite phones. So it looks like it went up from 9,700 to 26,000 this year. There's additional training in there, and then we will get some of that money back through grants. Any questions on the emergency preparedness? Animal control, that's on pages 346 and 347. There's two parts, there's animal friends of the valley, 42,000, and the county sheltering services, that's 69,000. We got newer numbers since this was published, it's about 79,000 for the, for the 69. We have the same percentage as the prior year, but the costs would have, and so our costs are going to be about $10,000 more for this department, so it'd be about 164,000.
Okay, Gary, sounds like you're correct. I'm with the animal friends of the valley, and we have new executive director, and we didn't have a meeting last, um, week that we were running last year. They're talking about going back to the city and asking for more money.
Up from the 3,500 a month?
Yes.
Okay. Well, hopefully they'll be able to get us that information before now in, in June when we try to adopt this budget.
I just, just wanted, okay?
Okay. It's been the same for the last few years, so. All right, now the next department is Public Works Administration, and that's on 348 and 349. We have a contract with PV Maintenance, and then also with Trilax, and they do like public works improvements that aren't chargeable to the gas tax or the measure A one. So any questions on public works? All right. The next one is the NPDES. Just has our NPDES for permit, our TMDL money, and then the 20,000 for leisure, and then for a consultant from InterWest, 16. So costs are up about 7,000 this year, the majority of that is in the consulting services for the NPDES. Any questions on this department? Next one is code enforcement, which we switched it from special enforcement to code enforcement this year, and that's on pages 352 and 353. Same thing, employees got cost of living of 2.3 and a 4% step increase proposed. And then I think it has another code enforcement officer this year, who was part-time last year, who is full-time this year, and so the total salaries went up to 201. And then with that salaries going up, the, the benefits went up as well. Everything else is, is pretty close to the prior year, so the only real change is in the salaries and wages. Any questions on this department? And then building and facilities maintenance. We, we changed this a little, we moved over the merchant owners association's charge of 7,000, we took it out, I think it was in city council or city manager, one of those departments, and we moved it over here. This is where we pay for the, the internet, we pay for all our electric, gas, water, and our telephones here. It has a rent for the library, city hall administration building, and then the annual charges there, it has the merchant owner 7,000, and then various things like pest control, security, HVAC, janitorial, those are all here, and so the total is about 115,000 in that type. And then we have capital equipment, furniture equipment of 12,000, and then the ADA project, which is going to be reimbursed from the CDVG grant. So the grant total of 170,50. The majority of that increase this year is moving over the merchant owner's charge and then the capital. Other than that, it's pretty consistent from year to year. Any questions on this one? Now we get into the other funds. On page 356 is the gas tax fund. I get these projection of revenues from the state. So usually fairly accurate. This could be different this year because, you know, it's tied to how much gas people are buying, and so with COVID-19, it might be less trouble, or is less trouble. I filled up three times in 60 days, so that's good. And then the expenses are professional specialized services, utilities, landscape maintenance, street maintenance, signal and sewing maintenance, tree trimming, and then water to, to water the things. There are some capital projects planned this year, we have the pedestrian crosswalk enhancement, the railroad canyon sound wall repairs, and then the strafing improvements, a total of 213,000. We're off on the revenues, it's not that big a deal because we have, you know, we have over $900,000 in carryover fund balance, so we're not, we're going to spend what we have to carry over. Any questions on the gas tax fund? Next fund is the measure A fund. We've been paying debt down, and in October of 19, we paid off all our debt to the county and to RCTC. And so for next year, there's two projects planned, the cash basin improvements and the block wall improvements, 350,000 in total. This measure A revenue is at 168, is a revised number provided to us by RCTC, trying to reflect the COVID-19 with the sales tax being down. So any questions on the measure A fund? The HQMD fund is where we buy most of our vehicles. We have nothing budgeted right now, but between now and, and either when we adopt the budget in June or mid-year, we will have some proposals to spend this HQMD money, but as of right now, there's nothing on the board. It's pretty limited as to what you can spend it on, so we'll come up with a plan. Page 359 is our law enforcement grants fund, and this is where we get the CalCOP's revenue. So we're predicting $155,000 in revenue, that's that 250,000 that you saw over on the police budget, and so we'll end the year about 100, well, we have 115,000 to start, so we'll end the year with about a $10,000 fund balance once we apply that money against the law enforcement. Any questions? Almost none, I suppose. Nothing on the next two pages, and then we have a new fund, which is on page 362, and this is our rental fund. This fund is set up like an enterprise fund, and so what we want to do is we want to cover our costs with our rents. And so what we have proposed is rental income, which is what we, what the current tenants are paying right now, even though all those leases are up soon. And then a loan from the general fund to do the repairs. We have the normal expenses like utilities, repairs and maintenance, assessments, interest expense on the loan, and then for a total of 47,000, capital building improvements cost of about 101,000, so we'll end the year roughly with about a $24,000 surplus. As part of the budget, we will bring a loan agreement to, for the, to loan the general fund to, to loan the general fund, to loan this fund money from the general fund, which will be part of the budget. Any questions on the new fund? I think the dog likes it. He does, see? Any questions on any of the budget?
Council, have any further questions? Apparently not.
They all signed off already. And I want to thank Anna, Chris, and Mike for helping. It was, it means a lot for them to go through and look at everything, so sometimes I do it by myself. Mike always says, one more thing, one more thing.
Well, thank you so much for the presentation. Well, thank you so much for the presentation, Terry. Looks like it slid right by. Well, if there's no other further discussion, I entertain a motion to accept.
This is just a discussion item, so we don't need a motion. If the council has any direction, they can direct staff, but otherwise it's just discussion.
Rule call, will it, or?
Okay.
Well, we're getting close to the end now. I think it's up to the city manager for some more comments.
Well, I actually don't have anything else at this time.
Okay. And we got off easy there. Move on to the council member reports. Council member, Honore?
I did a lot of Zoom this month, or last month, I mean, on the RCTC commission meeting and two committee meetings. And we're going to do the Zoom on the roundtable on Monday to the House next day.
Okay, thank you. Council member, just to you.
Good evening. I don't have too much to say except that I'm very proud to be a Canyon Laker. I'm very proud to live in this community. I'm very grateful that we are recognizing and supporting law enforcement this month. It's obviously very important to me, and I'm just looking forward to better times in our city and in our country.
Thank you. Council member, Green?
Well, good evening, everybody. It's because of COVID-19, we've had all of our, most of our meetings canceled. They've been rescheduled and then canceled. So it's been kind of a quiet month, other than everything we've been doing in the city trying to protect our community. I want to personally thank Casey for experimenting and Jeremy of our business form we did. Positive feedback. I think that just shows that we are considering and looking at everything we can do to make a viable community. It was a good experience today, even though most of our businesses are closed, to pass out a few masks that we made in as a community effort. And as a gratitude for all the volunteers that have made the mask, there will be a luncheon that will be paid for by some private donors to thank our community for the effort that they did to provide the mask and protect everyone. I believe that they have set the date, that sometime in June, and then coordinating with the POA and the country club. So with that, everybody be safe and have a good evening.
Thank you. Council member, Smith?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much. Just like most of you, everything's been virtual. RTA met virtually as well, over the phone, and just the simple updates on how to conduct business with COVID-19 and different ridership percentages that were down. Not much to report, though, but I just want to say thanks again for all the hard work. And I'll echo what Casey said, how proud I am to be a Canyon Laker, not only just because of the community efforts that have taken place over the last few weeks, but also look at the numbers. We've done a phenomenal job at keeping this thing down, and our numbers reflect very positive throughout the entire county when you look at the other cities that's been affected by this. Not only the deaths, but also just the percentages of how many people have COVID-19 and those own recovery. So what an amazing community and the hard work that we've done. And thank you, staff, for all the hard work and the long, long hours. Gina, Chris, Anna, Mike, Tyler, well, you've done such a phenomenal job in the short amount of time that you've been here, and we're so proud to have you. But very blessed to be a Canyon Laker this evening, and I'm very thankful to serve with each and every one of you on council. I think we're doing the right thing.
Thank you. Well, I guess it's my turn. Once again, I could probably echo what other council members have said. Everything that I've had has been virtually or on Zoom. Weekly, we've been having a mayor's meeting of all the cities here and out in the desert locally. And the theme is pretty much the same. Everybody has the same complaints. Everybody wants to get things open. Most of the people today, or not all of us, complain a little bit about the 11 hours that we watched the county board of supervisors yesterday with no conclusion. Had 100 people, 50 people were for something, and 50 people were opposed to it. But there's been a little bit of, I can't call it an uprising, and I'm certainly not condoning it here for Canyon Lake, but Norco just recently opened up their Bob the Big Boy, which table service, but outside, but you could go to the restaurant and sit outside and be fed whatever it is that you're going to be fed, I guess. They also, Norco opened up the restaurant at Ingalls Center, I believe it is. I don't know to what extent it was open, but that too is being attended by several people and told. Corona opened up a nail salon or beauty salon, and it's still open, and they're more or less just saying, hey, this is what we're going to have to do. If you're going to cite us, cite us, but they're certainly, they're taking a chance on losing their license is what they're doing. We certainly don't want to, we don't want to flaunt what we think we can do. Congressman Calber was supposed to be on the phone with us today, but he couldn't make it. There's been, well, several things that have taken place. I don't want to talk about all of them, because as I say, I don't think it's quite appropriate yet. We certainly, we want to open all of our businesses, of course, but we don't want them to take a chance on losing their licenses to do that. We don't want to expose the public to anything more than they have already. There's been problems with the city of Coachella, tremendous traffic problems. Food banks have been clogging up the streets supposedly. Caltrans and highway patrol have participated, but they want to get reimbursed for it as well. So that's an additional problem. Some of the comments today were that we can take all these precautions and perhaps save 50 lives, but at the rate we're going, if we continue doing this, the medical profession, hospitals, whatever, they're going to be closing, and there's going to be in the future, they won't be able to even attend to the people who are getting sick. So it's a, it's a two-sided coin, and both sides don't seem to come out too well. Glenn Miller told us today that I guess Mathis Brothers had opened, and then they closed them, and then they realized that it's better to have them open, so they're open again. Napa Valley supposedly was classified as essential, so the wineries are open in Napa Valley, which I'm not sure what the definition of essential is. And there was some concern about the upcoming holiday, Memorial Day. Cemeteries are closed. What are people going to do when they want to observe Memorial Day? Nobody had an answer for that today. It's pretty far-reaching. Somebody commented that collecting a rent, if you collect, that's your rent. It's better than none at all, so they're able to make a lot of concessions. And this went on and on, and as I say, every city had just about the same type of a complaint. And of course, we here in Canyon Lake would love to see everything open, but we don't want to rush things and do it the wrong way. There are several other things that I could touch on, but as I say, some of the rules don't make a whole lot of sense. Some of the associations have condominium associations where only one person at a time is allowed in a pool. That doesn't sound like a lot of fun. And here in Canyon Lake, people have been behaving themselves pretty well lately. Golf courses, they're observing the rules, the parks and beaches. I understand they're going to be open now. Is that correct? They could open the beaches here soon? Or am I wrong on that?
Well, it's really a question more for the POA. There's no longer anything legally on the books that would prohibit them from opening all of the beaches. However, should the POA decide to open their beaches, they would be responsible to make sure that they were being operated safely, which means that people on the beach would have to be practicing social distancing and not gathering in large groups because the state orders are still in place, and at least for the moment, the county orders are still in place. And so it's up to the POA to decide if they want to open those facilities, and if so, how to ensure that people are taking the proper precautions.
Well, thank you. That pretty well concludes my comments. I don't want to get any gloomier than I have been on some of these things or hopeful on other items. So with that in mind, I think that we'll adjourn this meeting. That meeting's going to be June 3 at 5:00 PM for closed session, 7:30 for open session. And we are going to go back into closed session. We didn't finish up today, so with that, we thank all of those that are listening, those that are here. And we're going to adjourn at 8:00 PM. Thank you.